Please take your seats and let's bring the council room to order, please. Rather than doing the vacation, I'd like to take just a minute to address one of our stalwart, great, charity-driven, big-hearted people, who's actually in Louisiana, passed away a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Jack Morrison. Jack was in the Exchange Club, he was on the Beaches Council on Aging, he was involved in a lot of things that behind the scenes, he didn't do it for getting in front of people and saying, "Hey, look at me," he did it because it came from his heart. We lost Jack a couple of weeks ago, his funeral's going to be on Friday, but if you would please rise, throw him in the moment of silence with Jack Morrison. Thank you, please throw him in the place. Thank you, please throw him in the place.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Follow me in your order, ma'am clerk, go in your roll call, please.
Kessler Dordy?
Here.
Kessler Demont?
Here.
Kessler Golding?
Here.
Kessler Hoffman?
Here.
Kessler Nichols?
Here.
Kessler Vogelsang?
Here.
Mayor Latham?
Here, and before we take the next item, I'd like to please remind everybody to put your phones on, vibrate, your phasers on stun, and if you are on the council, please put your phones into the airplane mode, and we'll move forward with two eleven, please.
I move that we approve the minutes at the council briefing held on November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Second. Got a motion of second, any discussion from the council? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, by your action, motion carries, two twelve.
I move that we approve the minutes at the regular council meeting held on November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Second. Got a motion of second, any discussion from the council? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, by your action, motion carries, announcements, Ms. Golding?
I'd like to say that I went to deck the chairs for the opening night, which was a couple of Saturdays ago, I believe, and of course, everybody can see it out here, and it's amazing, it gets better and better every year. Every year, I want to just thank everybody who's been involved with Deck the Chairs, especially Curtis Loftus, who seems to have made it his life, basically, to do this all year round, he's working on it, but it's amazing, if you guys haven't gone out to Deck the Chairs, after tonight's meeting, go out there, it's really something to see. And last but not least, my Auburn Tigers won, we beat Alabama, so I'm happy, and if we lost every game except for that one, I'd still be happy, Oriole.
Ms. Hoffman?
Congratulations, we beat Auburn, okay, at the Beaches Museum, we wait until after Thanksgiving to start celebrating the holidays, so this weekend is the Beaches North Pole Express, the event formerly known as the Polar Express, don't ask about that, later. It's going to be on Friday afternoon, and all day Saturday, we'll have Santa and the conductor attract this train, cocoa cookies, and this is a family-friendly event open to the public, so hope to see a lot of you out there.
Thank you, ma'am, Ms. Dumas.
Thank you, I'd like to reiterate what Sandy said, or you really have to go check out Deck the Chairs, they are doing a fabulous job, the light show is at night, every hour on the hour from six to nine, December fourteenth is the tuba Christmas, so if you haven't heard, a whole bunch of tubas playing holiday songs, it really is an experience, and it used to be up in Boston, but then it came down to the landing, and they're now, because the landing's gone, they're going to be doing it here, so now you don't even have to drive over the ditch and over the river, you can just mosey on downtown, ride your bike, your low-speed vehicle, whatever it is, but that is going to be on December fourteenth, and that's from one thirty to two thirty, and that's followed by the night of music and dance, a lot of community organizations have their youth up there doing a whole bunch of holiday festivities, and it really is a wonderful time, so check that out, and one more piece, if you go to Deck the Chairs, and you go towards the boardwalk, you'll see a Ferris wheel on the far end, right before the boardwalk, that's the city's chair, and they did a fabulous job, so the city employees, and they all volunteered spending time building that, and you see all the different departments on it, and they worked that in with the light show, and they did a fabulous job, so well done.
Thank you, ma'am, and let's offer the council queues, we're moving on into courtesy of the floor, and I've got one card, Mr. Thomas Bazuto, Thomas, if you come forward, get your name and address, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Thomas Bazuto, thirty-seven oh nine, San Pablo, Rhode South, thanks again for this opportunity to talk, it was really exciting to hear the updates on the golf course and the briefing before this, and just wanted to add on that, I tried to give everyone a little press release to hand out, us at the Jacksonville Beach Golf Association are sponsoring Kids Play Free Sundays, so to go on with what Bruce has been trying to do and make golf more available for junior golfers, we're going to make junior golf, the golf and the range well free for any kid that wants to come, two to three o'clock starting this Sunday, December eighth, and every Sunday after that. Obviously, the more we grow as a nonprofit, the more hours and days we hope we can make that available, I just wanted to make sure to invite all of you to the ceremonial first tee shot this Sunday at two o'clock, will be a lot of other businesses and local organizations there to support, we've got about eight kids hitting ceremonial first tee shot, all from local charities like Big Brothers, Big Sisters, First Tee, North Florida, the Adult Foundation, and some local kids that like to ride their bikes to the courses and stuff every day also, so it's really exciting, this is only like the second time in the nation, any program like this has been initiated at a public course, so we'd really like to see you there, and I look forward to showing you more of the programs I have to offer, thank you very much.
Thank you, Thomas, appreciate it. Okay, one announcement I forgot to make, for those of you that were in the council briefing before the council, we talked about moving the gate issue up quickly to the front, and unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to do that because the law requires us to provide, those of you that have asked to speak, to speak, so we're going to keep you in the agenda, I'm going to make one agenda change tonight, and that's item two nineteen, second ordinance, second reading ordinance, twenty nineteen, meeting one twenty-nine, which is the last item on the agenda, we'll move that forward to two eighteen, since we're expecting that's going to take a little bit of time with all these cards, so, that was my favorite part, my favorite part, being mayor, it says Jacksonville Beach is recognizing people who do good things for the city, and I'll start tonight with the American Legion Auxiliary's one hundredth birthday, so if I could get the members of the American Legion Auxiliary group come forward.
Whereas the American Legion Auxiliary was created in nineteen nineteen, one year after the American Legion was founded in nineteen eighteen, and whereas the American Legion's Auxiliary's mission is to support the American Legion and honor veterans, military, and their families, both in the United States and abroad, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has more than six hundred thousand members today from all walks of life, representing the Auxiliary's mission, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has upheld its mission for a hundred years, now therefore William C. Latham, the mayor of the city of Jacksonville Beach, by virtue of the authority vested in him, does hereby recognize November tenth, two thousand nineteen, as the American Legion's Auxiliary's one hundredth birthday.
Congratulations. All right, congratulations.
the power of people and organizations to transport the communities and the world,
Thank you.
and whereas Giving Tuesday is a celebration of all philanthropy and volunteerism, where
Okay, most of you do or don't know, I'm not sure, tomorrow is Giving Tuesday Day,
people give whatever they are able to give, and whereas Giving Tuesday is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for favored causes, build a stronger community, and think about other people, and whereas it is fitting and proper on Giving Tuesday, and on every day, to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism,
so I'm coming over here so I can speak, and everybody can hear me, but it's a great day,
and community service in the city of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, and whereas Giving Tuesday
we're going to learn a little bit more about it, but I've asked a lot of our five-one-three
is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others throughout this holiday season
Cs that service the community to come join us today, so I'm asking Mission House, Beam,
and during other times of the year, now therefore William C. Latham, the mayor of the city of
Beaches Community Kitchen, and Beaches Council on Aging, please come forward and join me
Jacksonville Beach, by virtue of the authority vested in him, does hereby proclaim December
at front.
third, two thousand nineteen, as Giving Tuesday Day in the city of Jacksonville Beach, and encourage all citizens to join together to give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful.
Congratulations. I'm going to ask, starting with Lori, Beam, introduce any of your team members that are here.
I think my board chairs are probably circling the parking lot, Janice Karen is with us in spirit today, right now.
And Jane, good company?
Yeah, I've got board members Matt Buffalo and Rosemary Knutson.
Natalie Collier is our social services supervisor, and I'm the assistant director at Mission House.
I'm the director of Beaches Council on Aging, the Dial Ride Program, and two of our drivers, John Ford and Scott Hamilton, are here, and one of our board members, Karina Saladino, is standing there taking a photo.
These guys do so much for the community, and it's such an honor to stand up here with them, they give out of the heart once again, and it's such a great group of folks joining me once again, if you would please by your applause to congratulate them for the job. Hurricanes, hurricanes are an ugly thing, they do a lot of, not just physical damage, but a lot of emotional and mental damage, two groups that stood out, when we have our hurricane that come up, and we start to look at evacuating people, our Beaches Dial Ride, and I'm also throwing out a heartfelt thank you to Sunny Decker, who's the hotel owner for most of the hotels in Jacksonville Beach, who's always been very good about helping the elderly get back into suitable places to live until the rooms are ready after the hurricane takes place, so, first, tonight, though, we're going to focus on Dial Ride, so Gary, I'm going to ask you to bring your Dial Ride folks back up again. Dial Ride services the elderly community and the physically disabled community, to provide independence and during the hurricanes, to get them to safety, and you'll read through, or you'll hear in the proclamation that the amount of time that they've put, and the amount of people that they've taken to the shelters has increased pretty dramatically over the last couple of years, so, ma'am clerk?
Whereas Dial Ride has assisted with hurricane evacuation efforts for seniors and disabled, for our beach community since two thousand sixteen, filling in when other resources were not available, and whereas Dial Ride has increased the number of seniors and disabled residents they service by fifty-three percent since they first began with Hurricane Matthew in October two thousand sixteen, and whereas Dial Ride's compassion for and for and understanding of our senior population has made them the primary resource for evacuation of our seniors during emergencies, and whereas Dial Ride's staff, drivers, and volunteers have been and are always attentive to the individual needs of every rider to ensure their transition from home to a shelter is quick and comfortable, and whereas Dial Ride's drivers remain on the island as long as possible to ensure all seniors, even those who have last-minute changes, are evacuated safely, and whereas Dial Ride's staff and drivers coordinate with all living facilities to ensure all residents arrive home as quickly as possible, whereas Dial Ride and the Beaches Council on Aging have provided a much-needed resource for our community, over the last forty-four years, they have been able to create a resource that is unique to our beaches as it is in this past year, now therefore William C. Latham, the mayor of the city of Jacksonville Beach, by virtue of the authority vested in him, does hereby proclaim December second, two thousand nineteen, as Dial Ride Appreciation Day.
Okay, moving on to two fourteen, you're going to be seeking nominations for appointments of one member and two alternates to the Board of Adjustment, Ms. Golding?
I'd like to nominate a reappointment of Scott Cummings to the Board of Adjustment, second.
Got a motion of second, read to reinstill and state Scott Cummings, any discussion from the council, Scott is a member, not an alternate, okay, any other questions or comments, ma'am clerk, give a roll call, please.
Kessler Dordy?
Yes.
Kessler Demont?
Yes.
Kessler Golding?
Yes.
Kessler Hoffman?
Yes.
Kessler Nichols?
Yes.
Kessler Vogelsang?
Yes.
Mayor Latham?
Yes, seeing nominations for two alternates, Ms. Golding?
I'd like to nominate the appointment of Dan Jansen to the first alternate position.
Second.
Got a motion of second, any discussion from the council, seeing, seeing none, roll call, please.
Kessler Demont?
Yes.
Kessler Golding?
Yes.
Kessler Hoffman?
Yes.
Kessler Nichols?
Yes.
Kessler Vogelsang?
Yes.
Kessler Dordy?
Yes.
Mayor Latham?
Yes, and one final alternate nomination, Ms. Hoffman?
I'd like to nominate Alexi Gonzalez as the second alternate, that will renew to your term expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-nine.
Second.
Got a motion of second, I see the second light on, or the second light on, do you have another nomination as well, in your nomination?
Yeah, I wanted to nominate Dan Amala, I was not here for the interviews, but I did listen to the recording that was made during the interviews, the Board of Adjustment was his first choice, and he's the only candidate who did select the Board of Adjustment as his first choice, he has lived in Jacksonville Beach for forty-five years, and he has dealt with the Board of Adjustment in the past, and I felt that he seemed to understand the role of the Board of Adjustment, so I thought he would be a good candidate, especially since it was his first choice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion of second on two candidates, any other nominations, okay, and what I'm going to do is have the clerk read off each council member, and you can vote for Mr., Ms. Gonzalez, is it Gonzalez?
Yes.
Or Mr. Amala, ma'am clerk?
Kessler Golding?
Dan Amala.
Kessler Hoffman?
Gonzalez.
Kessler Nichols?
Dan Amala.
Kessler Vogelsang?
Gonzalez.
Kessler Dordy?
Gonzalez.
Kessler Demont?
Amala.
Mayor Latham?
Gonzalez, so congratulations to our new appointees, and thank you very much for your longness to serve. Okay, moving on to agenda item two fifteen, please.
I move that we approve the three-year collective bargaining agreement with the Northeast Florida Public Employees Local Six Three Zero Laborers International Union of North America effective October first, two thousand nineteen.
Second. Got a motion of second, Mr. Stephanopoulos.
The item in front of you seeks the approval of the newly-enited contract for a three-year window, the negotiations have been going on for approximately four months between administrative staff and the representatives for the union bargaining unit, the agenda memo provides a summary of all of the changes that are being made to the proposed contract, one of the things to note is that in parallel with the negotiations for the contract, the city was also working with Evergreen Solutions to conduct a pay classification study to analyze the classification salary system across those employee positions as well as non-represented positions, staff is seeking approval of this item tonight, Ms. Nelson, who is the lead negotiator for the city, is here if you have any questions with regards to any specific issues in the contract.
Thank you, sir, any comments or questions from the council, Ms. Demont?
Thank you, I am happy that the city has done that compensation study, we've had a hard time in certain areas retaining employees, we invest a lot in them through training, and the salary has been lower, in some cases, much lower, so I thank the city for doing that compensation study, so this way we can attract and retain good employees, and these are your employees, so, well done, I like the adjustments, and I'm very impressed with how they managed to do that without compression, without inversion, the company that they went with was very impressive with how they, I want the model that they, I'd love to see their, that's proprietary information, but excellent job, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, Ms. Golding?
I'd like to echo what Ms. Demont said, I think it's important that we, that we make sure that we're paying our employees fairly, and that we are competitive as well, so I think the city's done a great job, and I definitely want to thank you, Karen, for taking time to answer a lot of my questions that I have, but I think this is, I think this is great, thank you so much.
Any more comments or questions from the council, seeing none, roll call, please.
Kessler Hoffman?
Yes.
Kessler Nichols?
Yes.
Kessler Vogelsang?
Yes.
Kessler Dordy?
Yes.
Kessler Demont?
Yes.
Kessler Golding?
Yes.
Mayor Latham?
Yes, two seventeen, please, I'm sorry, ma'am clerk, please read resolution number two zero four six dash two zero one nine by title only, please.
A resolution amending chapter four, hours of duty and leave of the city of Jacksonville Beach Personnel Policies effective October first, two thousand nineteen.
I move that we adopt resolution number twenty forty-six dash twenty nineteen, amending chapter four, hours of duty and leave of the personnel policies effective October one, twenty nineteen.
Second. Got a motion of second, Mr. Stephanopoulos.
These items that you see in front of you covered by this resolution, to some extent, are a little bit of cleanup, based on not just the negotiations with Leuna that have to be made in other personnel policies that we have, but also some administrative changes that we're making as well, to walk through them very quickly with you, because there are only six that are on here, the first is to codify Christmas Eve within our policies, the second is changing the waiting period for probationary employees to use vacation leave from six months to three, allows for leave to be used in many increments after a minimum of one hour, number four provides for executive management employees to be advanced three days' leave upon hire, and accrue leave at the equivalent rate of a nine-year employee, number five eliminates the thirty-day waiting period for new employees to accrue sick leave, and six changes references to doctor or physician to health care provider as defined in F M L A regulations, this basically codifies a lot of what we've talked about over the past six months to a year.
Thank you, sir, any comments or questions from the council, seeing none, roll call, please.
Kessler Vogelsang?
Yes.
Kessler Dordy?
Yes.
Kessler Demont?
Yes.
Kessler Golding?
Yes.
Kessler Hoffman?
Yes.
Kessler Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Latham?
Yes, and now we're going to shift the agenda, moving to ordinance, agenda item nineteen two nineteen, and ma'am clerk, please read ordinance number two zero one nine dash eight one two nine, second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance to amend ordinance enacting in establishing a comprehensive land development regulation and official zoning map for the incorporated area of the city of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, as authorized by chapter one sixty-three point three two oh two Florida statutes, by amending various sections of the land development code and providing for complication, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
I move that we adopt ordinance number twenty nineteen dash eighty-one twenty-nine, following its second reading, to amend section thirty-four dash three seventy-three and thirty-four dash three ninety-two of the Jacksonville Beach Land Development Code related to parking area and walkway setbacks respectively for certain residential properties.
Second. Got a motion of second, any discussion from the council, Ms. Dumas?
Yeah, I am, I am still uncomfortable with this, I had to explain this to my husband, he read Tony's letter to the editor and the beach's leader, and so then I had to explain to him setbacks and property, and like, but yeah, they wouldn't have to, the driveways don't have to be together if you design it so the driveways and garages are on the outer parts of the house, it's a three-clash, outer, outer, and then aisle one in the middle, so I'm still uncomfortable with this resolution when it comes to... 217, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2046-2019 by Title I, please.
A resolution amending Chapter 4, Hours of Duty and Leave of the City of Jacksonville Beach Personnel Policies effective October 1st, 2019.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2046-2019 amending Chapter 4, Hours of Duty and Leave of the Personnel Policies effective October 1st, 2019.
Second.
And a motion and a second, Mr. Stephanopoulos.
These items that you see in front of you, covered by this resolution, to some extent are a little bit of cleanup based on not just the negotiations with Leauna that have to be made in other personnel policies that we have, but also some administrative changes that we're making as well. To walk through them very quickly with you, because there are only six that are on here. The first is to codify Christmas Eve within our policies. The second is changing the waiting period for probationary employees to use vacation leave from six months to three. Allows for leave to be used in any increments after a minimum of one hour. Number four provides for executive management employees to be advanced three days' leave upon hire and accrue leave at the equivalent rate of a nine-year employee. Number five eliminates the thirty-day waiting period for new employees to accrue sick leave. And six changes references to doctor or physician to healthcare provider as defined in FMLA regulations. This basically codifies a lot of what we've talked about over the past six months to here.
Thank you, sir. Any comments or questions from the council? Seeing the roll call, please.
Councilmember Vogelsang?
Yes.
Casper Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Dumont?
Yes.
Casper Golding?
Yes.
Casper Hoffman?
Yes.
Casper Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Latham?
Yes. And now we're gonna shift the agenda, moving to ordinance. Agenda Item 19-219. And Madam Clerk, please read Order Number 2019-8129. Second reading by Title I, please.
An ordinance to amend ordinance enacted in establishing a comprehensive land development regulation and official zoning map for the incorporated area of the City of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, as authorized by Chapter 163.3202 Florida statutes, by amending various sections of the Land Development Code and providing for complication, severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
I move that we adopt ordinance Number 2019-8129 following its second reading to amend Section 34-373 and 34-392 of the Jacksonville Beach Land Development Code related to parking area and walkway setbacks respectively for certain residential properties.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Any discussion from the council? Ms. Dumont?
Yeah, I am still uncomfortable with this. I had to explain this to my husband. He read Tony's letter to the editor in the Beaches Leader, and so then I had to explain to him setbacks and property. I'm like, but yeah, they wouldn't have to... The driveways don't have to be together if you design it so the driveways and garages are on the outer parts of the house. It's a triplex, outer and then idol one in the middle. So I'm still uncomfortable with this resolution when it comes to non-development and block coverage and things to that nature. So I will not be supporting this.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Golden?
I believe there's a speaker card, Mr. Mayor, on this subject.
If you would give us your name and address. Your name and address.
Thank you, Sandy. I'm Tony Palmer, right? I live at 533 11th Avenue South, Jacksonville Beach. Townhouses have been, you know, one of my sore spots because they have taken over my neighborhood. Cory is one of my, you know, representatives. I wanted to speak on this earlier, but I had the unfortunate death of my dad at eighty-seven on a cruise ship. So I had to travel all around Florida, taking care of family matters. But I did write a letter to the editor. I included a picture of what these townhouses look like. I also, you know, the picture I have does not have a sidewalk in front of it. A lot of them do. It's going to be a nightmare for people. Firstly, Sandy, on the north side of Jacksonville Beach, on the opposite side of Third, on the west side of Third, going from Fletcher all the way to the Beaches Museum, Fourth, was it? Fourth Street, Fifth Street. Any single-family house that has a sixty-foot wide lot can be replaced with a triplex easily with this new rule. If they buy two houses, it's gonna be a highplex with no parking. A lot of these rooms are gonna be college students. Same thing with the North Jackson Beach. You take First Street, I mean, First Avenue, Second Avenue, in front of Gonzalez Park. You go right behind Dunkin' Donuts, behind the car wash. All of that area is multifamily. That will all be replaced with these townhomes. It will become a nightmare. And a bad entry point took everybody on the north side. Mayor Latham, just this year, I was speaking at a variance meeting where your neighbors showed up. It was an overbuilt complex. And what were they looking for? They were looking for driveway and accessories structure setbacks. You know, for a jet. I listened to the last recording. You bring up a very valid point. When you start slicing these properties in fifteen-foot-wide widths, what happens if one property owner decides never to repair his property, never to paint the property, never to replace the roof? There is nothing that adjoining homeowners can do. That is probably why it is written in the rules in the past that it had to be a wholly-owned unit or a condo in order to have such narrow widths.
Need to wrap that down.
Okay. What I have to say is I propose to stop the fast track of these rules. We must look at the parking regulations of the townhomes. We need to also have a grandfather clause in there that says, if we change the rules, it's only gonna be for six months until we can fully rewrite the rules. I will ask the question again. Is the City of Jacksonville Beach, the city council, the mayors, are you supporting the investors, the DRBOs, the developers, or the current residents that live here?
Tony, it's time for a wrap-up, sir. Thank you very much for your time.
Let's rewrite the Land Development Code if we have to.
Okay, any other comments from the council?
I voted like everybody else did, passed this through in the first reading, and then Ms. Dumont's points that she brought up were pretty poignant, and looked into it a little bit myself. Tony's right, happened in my own neighborhood. They were looking at two single-family homes. It's a multi-family, and they looked to turn it into eight units, two, four quadlets on two single-family homes lots. And it went to the Board of Adjustments requesting the variance to take the property lines all the way, or the setbacks of the property line. Thankfully, the Board of Adjustment denied it. I think we're getting into this situation again where this is kinda happening on a regular basis. And I can speak probably for most of us up here. Those who went through the recent elections, I'm sure you heard it quite a lot when you were walking from door to door, and those of us who went through reelection a couple of years ago, density was one of the biggest issues. And what scares me about this potential ordinance is that single-family homes can go down, they can be bought out, and you get six units in there with no parking. And I don't think we're doing a very good job of setting this up correctly. So I'm gonna oppose this time and suggest that we reconsider having it forward with the intent of this without making it an easy way for developers to come in and just overpopulate and overdensify our neighborhoods. Any other comments or questions from the council? Mr. Vogelsang?
If I could ask Mr. Man, if you would... Have you... Who have you talked to as far as the language that we're changing this to? And any suggestion, ways that we could modify it to make life a little bit more difficult to developers?
Excuse me. Bill Man, Planning Director, 11 North Third Street. In terms of who I've talked to, internal counsel, this is also the subject of a shade meeting that I was not a party to. In terms of how you can make it easier, I think we pointed out in the staff memo that by doing a condominium or a set of apartments that look like townhouses, these standards are not applicable. It's an inequity in our code right now to treat fee simple properties separately than joint ownership, whether it's an apartment building that somebody chooses to lease out, or whether it's a condominium where each person knows his unit, but it's a common property around it. So from a staff perspective, the amendment was just to relieve that inequity. Factually, the development of a property, multifamily property with townhouses, is not maximizing the allowable density on the property. So that's a little bit of a misnumber to think that by replacing two single-family houses with a townhouse development, that's not necessarily the most intensive use. If it's a multifamily, they could go apartments, or they could go condominium, and there would be more units. It's simply the matter of if you do fee simple development, you'd have to setback from the internal property lines that are created. If you choose to do a condominium, those property lines don't exist, so you could have a continuous ribbon drive. I don't have... Excuse me. We vetted this out when we drafted the ordinance. I don't have any offhand recommendations for how to change this proposal, though.
Mr. Doherty?
Yeah, I have a question along similar lines, well. I mean, what drove this change? And you've really answered like a lot of the alternatives.
As I said, this was, to my knowledge, this was the result of a shade meeting and a settlement agreement. So, and I can only speak to that because I'm not a part of the shade meeting.
Well, you know, I think all of us are aware that there is overdevelopment and manic areas of this beach, and I think there are parts of our Land Development Code that need to be readdressed that maybe weren't applicable years ago, but they are not. I've noticed people taking advantage of... I'm not gonna use the word liberals, but some of the things that we offered at variances were, they're basically claiming a hardship that is financial, even though it's not permissible. It's not a personal use, but when you have the availability in, I have a long house with three of them, it's obviously financial. You know, I would like to see us get ahead of this because I can see the tram of how developers are looking at property and land is very valuable in this city, and it's gonna continue to grow or increase in value. But yeah, this... So you're saying this just specifically deals with townhouses?
These simple townhouses and two-family dwellings that you gotta call a duplex? Excuse me. But if it's a two-family dwelling that looks like a townhouse, it's a two-unit building? That's a two-family dwelling. So this would just affect two-family dwellings and townhouses. I believe there was a setback for sidewalks on sidewalks of properties to two feet instead of five feet as well. And back to your hardship question, one of the things that's pointed out as the hardship is the allowance for a minimum fifteen-foot-wide interior unit of a townhouse, whereas if you apply the setbacks, you can't build that fifteen-foot unit. So that was pointed out by the people that brought us into that lawsuit, that that was an internal conflict, or the code had been backfilled.
And so if we were to vote this down, do we still have a right to apply a variance? Or you're saying they can't?
Oh, yes, sir. That doesn't change the route for any other variances, like if they needed a front-guard variance or a lock-overs variance. This does not supplant that, nor does this automatically increase allowable density in these many districts. You can't do that right now anyway without going through the comprehensive plan first. So it's not a density increase, it's just an allowance for a discrepancy in the code now between what you can build dimensionally-wise for a townhouse versus when you apply the setback standards and put the front door and put a garage entry on the front of the interior, you can't get that fifteen-foot-wide unit.
Well, I mean, like I said, I like the regulations about how property's being developed, but I was a part of that shade meeting, and I know that this is very specific and that there could be, you know, a financial penalty to the city, to the taxpayers, if we don't go this right. So while I'm not a hundred percent ecstatic about it, I think in this situation, I will support it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. And Mr. Nichols?
I guess, like Councilman Doherty said, I mean, this is a part of settlement that was based off of the shade meeting we had. And I mean, I think there could be some pretty substantial financial impacts to the city if this isn't considered, obviously, you know, like everybody addressed. I mean, it's, you know, density is becoming an issue. And I think that we are looking at redoing the Land Development Codes and stuff to be able to address this moving further. But I'm, I've got some... I would rather table this than vote on it just so if... So we can readdress the shade meeting to make sure everybody understands the detail before voting on this, because it's gonna be... It could be a pretty substantial financial burden on the city if this is not passed. And that's why I would be supporting this.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Dumont? Quick revisit?
Yes, please. Thank you. The... How I recall that shade meeting was that this was gonna be... They withdrew it with prejudice, so they cannot come back in that one entity. That property can't come back. So there are things in the future. This really does provide a lot of clarity. If we vote it down, this is... And I would be on the Planning Commission for a long time. There was a lot of question as to how the code was interpreted. And I think this will... I don't support this because I... Again, if we don't support it, it clarifies the interpretation of the code. So whether it's supported or not supported, it clarifies that interpretation. And that clarity is the key piece here. The... In the memo, it notes that it's not the intent of the LCP to promote one type of dwelling ownership versus another. That's kind of the purpose of what we see in the zoning. So it's... I just disagree with that statement. I, like I said, I... Having been on the Planning Commission for many years, listening to the residents, their concerns about the townhouses, especially as they started popping up, and the struggles that we were having on the Planning Commission with the applicants who were coming in. Sometimes they let us know beforehand that this was gonna be fee simple. Sometimes they slid it in afterwards. We didn't know it was gonna be fee simple. That's been clarified now, but I still can't support this. Just having my experience in the Planning Commission, I just don't think this is going to be good.
Thank you. Ms. Hoffman?
Just, and the rest of that sentence was, it's not the intent of the LCP to promote one type of dwelling ownership versus another, parentheses, in this instance, condominium slash rental versus fee simple ownership. So it's not saying single-family versus multifamily. It's just within those designations of multifamily types of buildings. I... We supported this unanimously on first reading. I continue to support it because it does resolve an inequity. This doesn't address density because an apartment could go in here, condos could go in here the way that the Land Development Code is currently written. So this clarifies it. This is something we've been talking about, meaning classification in our Land Development Code for a long time. But the bigger issue of the future of Jacksonville Beach, we have stated many times, and we're working forward on the path to do a full revision of our Land Development Code. So that's where we need to be having that greater conversation. We can't just nitpick and enforce selectively certain things or interpret them in a certain way because of the winds of popular sentiment in my opinion. I think that's dangerous to do. So I do want to say again that we do need a revision of our Land Development Code, and we need to start thinking about the fact that Jacksonville Beach is almost completely developed. So we're really talking about redevelopment at this point. It is tearing down older houses now and putting in newer buildings, houses, or condos and the like. So I do continue to support this.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Nichols, a quick revisit?
I'm back on the fact that we have a concept internally that this is trying to address. Even if we wrote this down, I believe we're still... They would continue to pursue the lawsuit, and if we lose that, we'll be forced into probably potentially something worse than this.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, can you get a roll call, please?
Casper Doherty?
Yes.
Casper Dumont?
No.
Casper Golding?
No.
Casper Hoffman?
Yes.
Casper Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogelsang?
Yes.
Mayor Latham?
No. Okay, moving on to Resolution Number 2047-2019. Madam Clerk, please read by Title I, please.
A resolution by the City of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, resolving the matter commonly known as the Lakeside Drive Gate, declaring valid public purposes for an electronically operated gate to be installed and remain permanently closed with the exception for emergency at public works purposes, Kings Road Bridge closures, and certain emergency events. Assigning city staff with direction to effectuate what purpose of this resolution, repealing prior inconsistent resolutions and council decisions, providing an effective date, and for other related purposes.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2047-2019, permanently closing the Lakeside Drive Gate and exploring electronic controls for public safety vehicles and access.
Second.
And a motion and a second. And before we give... Well, we don't really need Mr. Stephanopoulos to talk about it because we've been talking about it for a long time. A couple of council members and I were speaking before the commencement of the meeting and share a sentiment that we're looking at it in an audience with a bunch of red shirts and a bunch of green shirts, and we're watching the division of a neighborhood. And it breaks my heart personally that this is something that you guys didn't come together and see if you could find a solution. One of the problems we've got here is you've made it pointedly clear with all your letters and a lot of your comments that either we vote with you completely or we're, you know, backhanding, backdoor, politicking elected officials. I can assure you that seven of us up here are doing the very best we can to support this as best we can and find the fairest possible way to do this. Today, when we call up your cards, I'm asking you, please, in order to keep us from going until midnight, if there's new information that we haven't heard before, come on up and tell us. If you just wanna come up and say, "I support this," or "I oppose this," that's great. But let's try and keep this camp, you know, with the appropriate level of candor. I know that the last time that we met, there was at least one person who used foul language. I won't tolerate that again, and you'll be escorted out of the building if that happens again. So I'm asking you all to put on your big-boy pants and big-girl pants, and let's do this like friends and neighbors and not do it like opponents and enemies, okay? That all being said, I guess we'll start with the cards. Patrick Weaver. Patrick, if you can, for it gives your name and address, we have three minutes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Patrick Weaver. I live at 2000 Kings Road in Jacksonville Beach. I want the gate to stay open. So far, everything in the discussion has been, "Keep the gate closed." And we really haven't heard very much discussion about keeping it open. Mr. Ambrosio, you did a lot of research on how to keep the gate closed, how to prevent low-speed vehicle coming through, how to... It seems like a lot of the research was done in favor of keeping the gate closed. Maybe I missed some of the other meetings, but there wasn't a lot of discussion of... Maybe I missed some of the other meetings, but there wasn't a lot of discussion of the research you did on how to keep it open, so that's clearly a very one-sided discussion. So just those thoughts, and I like that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna read real quick here. People that support the, the gate, closing the gate, but who would not like to speak are Leslie Leon from Arden Way and Shelly Gill King of Arden Way. And those who are opposed but wish not to speak are Travis Smith of Waterway Island Court, Laura Constantino, I'm sorry if I mispronounced her last name, Laura, on Neptune Beach, Indian Woods, and Britt Sanders on Oakwood Road. And back into those who wish to wait, yep, those who wish to speak. I'm gonna try to alternate between opposing and supporting, so we keep things lively and not too depressing here. Okay, David Pallavina. David, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, sir.
David Pallavina, 2069 Lakeside Drive, Jacksonville Beach, Florida. Based on what Mayor Latham asked us to do, if there's nothing new, not to spend more of the time, I request that you close the gate permanently for all purposes other than emergencies, and do not postpone the vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Patrick, we already, Patrick. Amy Cooper. Amy, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, ma'am.
My name is Amy Cooper, I live at 2742 Longus Lane, Jacksonville Beach. I only recently heard about this in the past 30 days or so, so I apologize for, I guess, coming to the show late. My husband and I and our two children bought inside the gate two, four and a half years ago. I don't think anybody here would knowingly sign up to agree to have, you know, the delay of emergency vehicles coming to your house an additional 10 minutes, if you need to go to the hospital, additional 10 minutes to get you to the hospital. Whether you have the need for emergency services or not, or will unfortunately have the need in the future, I believe every second counts. The extra seconds can mean a difference between life and death. A solution as easy as installing a speed bump to satisfy the alleged speeding on Lakeside Drive is far easier, less expensive, and worth it in order to save lives and potential property. I don't see how anyone could vote against that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We're not gonna applaud, okay? We're gonna keep the corner in place, and everybody, just let everybody speak respectfully and listen respectfully. Thank you. Okay, Davidson Johnson. Davidson, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, sir.
My name is Davidson Johnson, 24 Sallwood Court, I'm 80 years old, getting out better. I just have to say, I want to know if the bridge, if the gate being closed would benefit more people or help people, which would be better to have it open or would it be better to close, which is actually a simple thing. It seems to me that it'd be more beneficial to leave it open, it'd less headaches, it'd tend to be better for emergency vehicles, fire trucks, police, any of those wanting to get somewhere and hurt. It would have to go around the bridge and go over a terrible intersection in the, in Florida. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service. Appreciate it. Richard Kaufman. Richard, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Richard Kaufman, I live at 1848 Seagate Avenue. Thank you allowing me to speak again tonight. Having worked in the, as I said last time, in the traffic operations industry for over 40 years, this is really a no-brainer for council. There's been much to do about the safety aspect. Unofficially, I've done some what we call travel time runs, going, well, I can't go through the bridge because it's not fixed, we're looking at about two minutes average. There's been a lot of discussion about folks who may need to get to the hospital very quickly because they work there to deliver babies or have surgeries or whatever. I'm sure, as councils are aware, there's lots of folks that live at the beach that, that are trauma surgeons or OB-GYN, delivery docs, that, that work at Baptist downtown, deliver babies, and Memorial Hospital and other places, other hospitals. So I, I think a two-minute delay at the most is certainly acceptable to not create all these traffic issues that will most certainly come. Thank you for your time, I urge to vote tonight.
Thank you, sir. Kevin Brown. Kevin, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Kevin Brown, 1833 Kings Court. Apologize for being in a separated thing, I usually unite the beach, and, but my biggest issue is the thoroughway. Before the bridge was under construction, we had a simple little neighborhood, and it'll stay simple, having one way in, one way out. If, from what I understand, we are spending $25 million on a water runoff system, that the bridge was made part of the package. So, and I've asked FDOT, also asked several estimators, nobody could give me an exact number, but it's somewhere between $3 and $5 million that we are spending on that Kings Road causeway. Now, that is to reinforce it, that is to make it stronger for the delivery trucks, the utility trucks, and various vehicles that are going back there to bring building supplies. My problem is the thoroughway. If that gate stays open, being at the beach my whole life, it's unpredictable, and that's, that's the word to use. We cannot predict that people will not come down Kings Road, through Lakeside Drive, use Oakwood, Arden Way, and Pine Wood to get to Pennman Road. It's unpredictable. But with public knowledge, as soon as that gets out, if that gate's open and the bridge is secure, there's gonna be all kinds of through traffic that neighborhood. Now, I want the neighborhood, and it's hard being a leader. First of all, I want to thank y'all for your leadership. It's hard being a leader, because sometimes you have to make decisions for the few to compromise the minute. And I want the neighborhood, and we're talking about 20, maybe 25 homes that are being affected that want the gate open. Then you walk the neighborhood, and if you start at Kings Road, and you walk all the way through the bridge, and you walk down Lakeside, and you walk down Oakwood to Pine Wood to Pennman, up Arden Way, I quit counting at 200 homes. So you're talking about through traffic that's gonna affect not one neighborhood, Neptune Beach, but two neighborhoods, maybe three. So I hope that we think hard, keep, once that $25 million project is done, we're gonna have this secure bridge that will take care of all utilities, all emergencies, the emergencies are coming from Atlantic Beach anyway, so they're coming from that direction. So, thank you for your time, I appreciate your due diligence, thank you for my time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Ty Gordon. Ty, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. This is Ty Gordon, 2040 Waterway Island Lane. I wouldn't plan on saying this, but when Brandon and I first approached you, Sandy, Sandy came to a council briefing and asked you about doing another workshop, so, and you said there, in the meeting afterwards, that our concerns were never taken seriously, that was your quote. So we were put in no position to approach our neighbors in red about maybe coming up with something as a team that everybody could accept. So you put us in a position where we're fighting like meat dogs from the very beginning with what you said, and I think you should be held accountable for that. So there's been a lot of talk about promises, and I want to read something from 2015, it's the last communication on record from the city to any of those residents. Part that says, "The city's position of the current operation of the gate meets our expectations. However, we will continue to monitor the situation, and in the future, we believe our current operation of the gate is a public safety problem. We may look at other options, such as opening the gate for a longer period of time, or working with Neptune Beach and other agencies towards rebuilding the Seagate Bridge to Pennman." I don't think anybody in there lobbying for Seagate to be rebuilt, but what monitoring has been going on, I mean, I don't think anybody monitoring going on, there's almost 20 new houses back there. So, and this is the last thing on record, that's not a promise to never have it open. It's very clear that's not a promise. Sandy, you responded to an email I wrote to you last night, and you corrected me rightfully that I've been miss用ing the word zone. So it's not zone right-of-way streets, however, the land classification is right-of-way streets, which also could have been utility, it could have been excess land, but it's not, it's right-of-way streets, and that, you guys have refused to discuss that. You also mentioned some other things in '94, 2003, 2004, 2007, all of those things are missed opportunities to do the right thing. So I know two wrongs don't make a right, so you guys are trying to figure out if five, six, seven wrongs make a right? Now's the time. Every time we hear anything about a promise or a commitment, everybody in the green here is, you don't care. It's easy to say to some resident, you knew what you bought when you bought it there, it'd probably be easier to say to some of these folks over here, hey, that's been a road right-of-way since you bought your house, we need a road there. But what do you say to residents of Forest Marsh? And Mr. Brown doesn't talk about those where, if we need to head south on Pennman, we have to go down Forest Marsh and Neptune Beach, where they've had their own issues, and that is the only reason I would ever use that road? Everybody here that needs to go south on Pennman will use Forest Marsh, there's been no consideration for them. A few of you have been critical of Mayor Latham, where are you now? One of you said the gate is ridiculous, where are you now? One of you supported a full traffic study, where are you now? One of you touted the wisdom of consulting companies, we're discussing the reason on First Street, where are you now? We could use a consulting company now. And I'm gonna wrap up here, that's about it, so. I feel good about everything that I've done, I've made lots of new friends, and I hope everybody up there feels good about the way they've handled this too.
Thank you, sir. David Johnson. David, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, sir.
I'm David Johnson, I'm a resident at 1869 Paul Dodd Neptune Beach. I, I've lived there since 2004 with my family, I have a wife and four kids, and I was gonna tell you a story, so I'm gonna read it, I think it's a cool story. I want to tell about the birth of my five-year-old boy. My wife, Diane, and I lived on Michael Bud, and we were there with my wife on bed rest. She was 34 weeks pregnant, both terms 40 weeks, she was six weeks early. She'd been ordered there on bed rest at Dr.'s orders. Sometimes at 11 o'clock that night on April 17, 2014, the water broke and liquor started. We made a decision to go ahead and head for the hospital. We drove through old Kings Road Bridge, through Indian Woods, before there were numerous stop signs and speed bumps and down Pennman. It's certainly longer than two minutes to go that way, it's a mile, over a mile from my house to like Pennman, and it's 25 miles, speed limit, do the math, that's ridiculous. Anyway, we were about to send this to Southside, or OB was expecting us, my wife was laboring, I was thinking about going to Baptist Beaches, but we couldn't go there because they don't take babies under 36 weeks there, and Mayo, I drove by there, they don't have OB services. I pulled him by the mullard, and my wife said, pull over, he's coming out now. So we pulled over, and I called 911, the ambulance came late, we're on the side of the road, my wife's full minivan, she was in the passenger seat, I delivered a baby. Cars passing by, it was almost midnight. Diane came out, it was great night, healthier to him, she had a little lightest good jacket on. I cut his cord, I had a kid, everything was fine, the NPs came and brought the rest of the way to the hospital. They had a short say, my wife and baby, looks good, we came home, he's fantastic and healthy now. What would happen if I had to go, if I got on my Lakeside, probably would have cut off my route, probably was saving five minutes, I'm guessing, but, you know, I might have made it to the hospital in time, and then I wouldn't have this cool story that I tell Luke about regularly, and it was one of the most wonderful miraculous things that happened to me. And what would happen differently, I don't know, what if I had got outside the road and my, my boy didn't make it, or my wife didn't make it? I hate to think that that happened, because this is a real story, this is a real event. I could have lost them both, it would have killed me. Especially if I'd known I could have gotten to the hospital faster if I had that gate there. I would probably have told the city, Jackson Beach is responsible, and I don't know that emergency gate would have helped me with that kind of situation, so I don't think it's a viable option for someone in a private car. There are many reasons to keep the gate open, but I think this is the most important one, so next time, think about Luke, and maybe the next time won't be a cool story, but it'll be a really sad one.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate it.
Yes, Luke.
Very nice.
Same.
Thank you, sir. Elizabeth Walsh. Elizabeth, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, ma'am.
My name is Elizabeth Walsh, I'm an OB-GYN with privileges at Baptist Beaches, my address is 2628 Lois Lane, Jacksonville Beach. I believe the gate at Lakeside needs to remain open permanently. It does not make sense for the number of families who live in the area behind the gate to have one entry-exit point over water. There are way too many potential unexpected problems from water and land that may unexpectedly, unexpectedly close that gate. In that instance, we are waiting a period of time for Jacksonville Beach to open the gate. In that time, if a medical provider needs to get to the hospital for an emergency, or if someone in our neighborhood has an emergency, precious minutes are lost. The past decisions no longer apply. Past decisions to keep the gate closed, other than emergency times, have totally become obsolete. In the last 10 years that we've lived there, approximately 20 new houses have been built. Conservatively, that's 40 more cars every day they're dealt with. Most of us are Jack's Beach taxpayers, we should have constant access to the roads that we help pay to maintain. We are not picky, we just want and need two entry-exit points. An alternative is certainly rebuilding the Seagate Bridge. However, it is certainly more fiscally responsible to utilize the existing Lakeside access and keep the gate open permanently. Closing it is not an option.
Thank you, ma'am. LeWan Kazmerzak. I apologize if I butchered your name.
I'm used to it. Hi, my name is LeWan Kazmerzak, and I live at 2768 Lois Lane in Robert's Hammock. Thank you for your time for listening to my comments today. I've owned my property since 2004, and I finally built a new home in 2018. For years at Robert's, the Robert's property was underdeveloped, now we now have a dozen new homes, which helps increase revenue for Jack's Beach. Neighbors in my area have enjoyed the luxury of vacant spaces for years, but with growth, changes come, and I believe everyone has accepted this and the increase in their home values. I too have enjoyed the luxury of empty space, and with nice sunset views, again, things change, and I have accepted that. I feel that the residents of Lakeside Drive have had the luxury of a private road for a long time, and it's time for change, and they need to adapt as well. The bridge that once connected Seagate changed and limited access to our neighborhood, and everyone's adapted. Residents on my side of the gate have enjoyed access to Lakeside Drive during the day while providing access to vehicles with heavier loads due to the bridge limitations. Now you want to take that away. While the Kings Road Bridge is out of commission, the Lakeside residents have experienced higher traffic, but once the bridge reopens, traffic will decrease. Our community needs to work together, as you've stated, Mr. Latham, and not apart. Therefore, I would ask the city not to choose one set of residents over another. We are one community and should respect each other as we travel our roadways, no matter where we live. I understand Lakeside would enjoy less traffic, Kings Road would as well. The streets and railways of the city belong to the city, not to the residents. As a Jack's Beach resident, I should have unrestricted access to the city roads and should not be forced to have to go through Neptune Beach as an only access to my Neptune Beach property. Having more than one option in case of emergency is always, should always take precedence, especially when one is right in the palm of of our hands. We have to expect the unexpected. I think the Lakeside residents would appreciate having another way out should a tree fall and block their access on their only way out. I believe that they would enjoy having this access as they make their way towards Atlanta Boulevard. Our part of Seagate provides similar opportunity of visiting beautiful sunset bridges, walking their dogs, riding their bicycles, et cetera. Lakeside Drive has always been platted as an access road, not a court, and I feel it should remain that way and remain permanently open. If the city elects to close a gate permanently, I feel you are sending the residents in my area a clear message that you're not interested in having us as Jax Beach residents. We pay taxes. We expect to be treated that way. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jerry Wessel. Jerry, if you can forward give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Hello, Jerry Wessel. I live at eighteen twenty-one Indian Woods Drive, Neptune Beach. I'm the last house on the left before the bridge on Kings Road, and per your request, I kept the comments way back. I only have a brief comment to make to you. I want to know what the difference is between these two neighborhoods. As council, you have legislative right of eminent domain, and none of that's really being exercised here. We already have the infrastructure in place, the public character and the roadway that serves the purpose of currently benefiting the general public. What I don't understand is, I feel like we're having a wrong discussion here. Some of us just found out about this three weeks ago. Like, this was just all news. And I appreciate you guys saying us working together as a community, because I had no idea this was occurring. I feel like the discussion we should be having is not the pleading of the infrastructure converse. We should be having a discussion on how we work together to improve both of those egresses while maintaining public safety and setting standards of salt life. You asked for new information. I leave you this one thought. I want to know, if you guys close the Jax Beach side, what if the Neptune Beach residents get together, put up a gate, and we close Neptune Beach? Then what do we say to the Jax Beach residents? I mean, seems to me it's kind of a double-edged sword that I would not want to see anybody doing. I don't like to see the district, government, community. The last thing is, I think everybody's asking about is the distance. Just so you guys know, it's asking two-point-three miles from Arden Way around to the first home in Jacksonville Beach. So, I, a few weeks ago, told you guys about a story about first responders and one man saved a young lady's life. Two-point-three miles, unless they're going sixty across speed bumps, nothing would have been. So, God bless you guys, and I hope you make the right choices. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Rodney Walsh. Rodney, if you can forward give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Yes, my name is Rodney Walsh. I'm at twenty-six twenty-eight Lois Lane in Jacksonville Beach, Florida. I've heard a lot of discussion about ancillary issues like golf carts, and but nobody's really talked about keeping the gate open. I'm not for keeping the gate open. My wife is an OB-GYN. She just spoke. And five or ten minutes can mean life and death. The police officers have to come through Neptune Beach to cruise our neighborhood if that gate's closed. I think that's a disservice to our community. And really, if we, if a police officer has to go through Neptune Beach to get to our neighborhood, and we're Jacksonville Beach taxpayers, why are we even part of Jacksonville Beach? We should probably be part of Neptune Beach. There is urban secession, and I think maybe we should look at that. Because, and one of the most recent cases has been Stockbridge, Georgia. And they had an option to secede from there, and maybe we should do the same thing, because we are clearly not being represented. Because nobody's ever talked about keeping the gate open. All of y'all want to talk about is golf carts or bicycles being able to go through when you've got a city right-of-way that's got a fence right in the middle of it. Like the gentleman said before, if, what if Neptune Beach at the end of the bridge decides to shut the gate up there? If their people get mad, well, then you're stuck. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Morgan Siders. Morgan, if you can forward give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, ma'am.
Before I start, I'd like to give you probably the position of bill.
Just give it to the clerk.
There's a hundred and ninety-fourth document on it a week or so. Also, there are handouts that have been, if you mind, passing this. Everybody's making.
Will you start with your name and address, please?
Yeah, Morgan Siders, twenty-fourty-one Waterway Island Lane. So, the first document that I've given you all to look at, there should be a copy for everybody here, attorney and manager included. Somebody mentioned from the council that they had seen no evidence that there were ever any other required egresses to our area. So, here in green, you have a highlighted area where the Kings Road Bridge is. Green for "go" because we're able to drive over that. The other three in red, no pun intended, are the ones that have been blocked. Seagate Bridge is underlined. Holly Lane is what is now Lakeside Drive. And then there's also the Kings Road Extension. Kings Road and Holly Lane were taken out by Tenny's Development. And then Seagate, I recently learned, maybe was actually built by Tenny. Don't know if that's true or not. But if it is, you know, he, maybe he built that bridge knowing that in the future with his development, he was gonna take out two of our egresses. So, he was compensating by giving us another thoroughfare. Otherwise, why would he waste the resources and the time and money to build a bridge? Probably because we were gonna be locked up. Going on to the second one, somebody else on the council also mentioned that it was zoned not as a right-of-way. I'm not guessing. It was quoted, "Not a right-of-way." Here in the blue circle on page two, it is a right-of-way and streets. That's how it's been platted. The zone is actually just the area. The whole entire area is a zone, and that's residential single-family. So, that's what I think that council number was thinking of, the SR-1. But the use is a right-of-way. Clearly, like, moving on to the third document, a letter from former mayor, Mr. Marsden, to Dave, not sure if this was Paul Avina or not, saying, "This is the letter I mentioned. Our feeling is that if Seagate is open, Lakeside is not needed. Here we have Seagate closed, which would entail, he was implying, Lakeside is needed." Right? Moving on. The nineteen seventy-nine letter that everybody is hinging everything on. When we did documents requests, this area did come underlined, and I have scribbled through one word there and replaced it. Can't remember to see what it says, but it says "if." When you read this, the way that it was originally written, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense. Why would the city want, sorry, I'll give you a minute to read it. I'm running out of time. Okay, read it later. If you read it the way that the city wrote it, it doesn't make sense to have the bridge and Lakeside open at the same time. That wouldn't benefit Tenny, and it wouldn't benefit people on the other side. That would create a thoroughfare. I think that the intention of this was to use, to convey the message that if Seagate's open, then Lakeside is not needed. And that also would reflect on what Mr. Marsden said in his letter.
Thank you, Ms. Siders. Your time, your time, sir. Thank you.
Okay. There's another document. I'd like to take my time to look at it.
Thank you, ma'am. Marlene Chadd. Marlene, if you can forward give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, ma'am.
Marlene Chadd, twenty-fifty-six Lakeside Drive. And some of the things that are important have already been said. But the numbers from the traffic survey that was done by the Jacksonville Beach Police Department pretty much said it all. We are experiencing four and a half times the expected norm for traffic on our street. And in summary, the results definitely substantiate the safety and other concerns that have been expressed by residents on both Lakeside Drive and the surrounding neighborhoods. In regard to this traffic survey, I would like to correct some misinformation that's been published by some people. The city of Jacksonville Beach does have a traffic department, and it is a division of the Jacksonville Police Department. The results of the study are public information and are available.
Ms. Chadd, excuse me for interrupting. Can you pull the microphone a little closer to your mouth? Thank you.
And are available to be viewed by everyone. And I have some printed copies of the traffic survey.
Can you address the council, please? Thank you.
If anybody would like to have a copy. And contrary to what was mentioned, Lakeside Drive residents did not sit out for twenty-four hours, for seven days, count the vehicles. These were done out of traffic trailer. I would also like to emphasize something pertaining to Parcel A. At the pre-council briefing on the eighteenth of November, it was explained that Parcel A is a fee simple parcel that is owned by the city of Jacksonville Beach. Parcel A is not a right-of-way or a roadway for any traffic. It's a piece of land owned by the city for emergency purposes. No vehicles could be driven over except for emergency purposes. And I would like to publicly, to personally thank each person involved, both directly and indirectly, who has looked at the situation, has gathered data, and has done research to make certain that an informed decision was made. Permanently closing the gate on Lakeside Drive is the justifiable, honorable, and proper action to take. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Brian Doer. Brian, if you can forward give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Brian Doer, two zero one four Lakeside Drive. And one thing I'd like to mention is, I'll go back to the October seventh meeting when Ty Gordon presented to Neptune Beach City Council, saying that this is a safety and convenience issue for us. His next sentence was, "I don't think that the emergency and medical issue is as big of a thing as people are making it out to be." So, I can't even believe that we're still here discussing this over what I think it believes a false safety issue. And some of the instances that I've heard people say, like, "Oh, I'm gonna put my baby in the car as choking, and I have to drive all the way around to the hospital." Everybody's missing one thing. Call nine-one-one first. That's what first responders are for. Don't waste those critical seconds. When they say every second counts, you're wasting seconds if you don't know the protocol. So, I've taken training, go for Jax Beach PD, for Citizens Police Academy, CPR training. So, the first thing you do ever is call nine-one-one. They can get there to take care of you. So, the other thing I did is, when we talked about safety, the first thing I did was go speak to Fire Marshal Shaw and ask him, "What is your opinion on this gate issue?" And with his big smile that he always has, it seems, he said, "I'll tell you exactly what I told the gentleman on Waterway Island. There is no issue. There's no access issue. There's no safety issue. If we have a problem, we're coming from Atlantic Beach and Jax Beach. We'll arrive within seconds of each other. There's not a problem." So, I also happen to be the secretary of the Fraternal Guard Police Associates. November fifth, at our meeting at the lodge, Lodge Seventeen, I pulled aside a gentleman I've known. Jax Beach Police Department's been here for many, many years. He knows our neighborhood well. I said, "What is your opinion on the gate?" Set his drink down. He said, "Brian, the people that think that gate has to be open need to use a little common sense, because we are not coming through Ocean Forest in an emergency cold situation with sirens and lights. We're gonna go the straightest, fastest way possible. Forest, Kings, period." In fact, he joked, because most of my guys don't even know how to get in and out of Ocean Forest. So, if anybody's come in, you know that. In fact, my wife and I had to use GPS after we bought our house to find our way back in. So, I've also provided you folks with traffic studies. I provided you with four years of police emergency calls for that whole area back there, Waterway Island, Lois Lane, Kings Court, Kings Road. Guess how many emergency calls in the last four years? Zero. Okay? And the police chief confirmed that. So, again, I'd just like to, there's no precedent whatsoever to leave that gate open. And there's no documentation ever saying that that should be open. In fact, there's plenty of documentation. And I have to thank Sandy for the tremendous work she did, and also Chris. I mean, you guys know the facts. This has to be based on truth, not fear and threats. So, I'd urge you, again, vote tonight. You want to do the low-vehicle, low-speed vehicle access later, do it later. Well, let's vote to close it tonight. Thank you very much.
Seth Lane, are you still there? You have a note on your line. You had to be, speak by seven-thirty, but I unfortunately can't control that. Zonlin Williams. Ms. Williams, if you can forward give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, ma'am.
Happy to say my name is Sam. And I've been a resident forty-five Oakwood Road since nineteen eighty-four. And I just want to say, first of all, I'm very grateful to you, Mayor Latham, and the city council for your commitment to restoring and preserving the integrity and safety of the Ocean Forest neighborhood. This is a policy of life issue for those of us who live here. I want to thank you for the time and efforts put into this unfortunate situation. Some of the comments spoken and correspondence have been way out of line for civil discourse on the subject. I assume some of this has risen through lack of knowledge and misinformation. One example being that Lakeside Drive is not a private road. Another example is that Seagate belongs to Neptune Beach. Take your concerns about Seagate to Neptune Beach. They'll be thrilled to hear from you. The bottom line is, Lakeside Drive was platted as a cul-de-sac in nineteen eighty, as you know. And you all know that it's not a simple task to change the legal designation of a street or two. Simply checking with Google, one would find that a cul-de-sac defined as a reasonably short street with bulge end does designed to slow and limit traffic through a neighborhood because it does not connect to another street. Cul-de-sacs are generally perceived to be safer, and homebuyers will pay a premium for them. Over the years, new development in the area has used the cul-de-sac model to provide desirable homesites. How ironic that the residents from Lois Lane and Waterway Island Lane, in favor of dismantling the Lakeside and Ocean Forest neighborhoods, live on cul-de-sacs themselves. Do they not know about the golden rule? Do they not understand we should be kind and thoughtful to our neighbors? I appreciate the thorough and thoughtful resolution that has been put forth tonight, and I thank you for voting in favor of it.
Thank you, ma'am. Jackie Callahan. Jackie, if you can forward give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jackie Callahan, and I live at eighteen forty Kings Court. In fact, I live right across the street from Coach Brown. So, I would just like to say here with that, when I moved to here from Los Angeles four years ago, I met you at the deck of chairs, and the first thing you said to me was, "Welcome home." What I feel, though, is that I am completely unwelcome, that I am not wanted, that the fact that I would like to keep the gate open makes me a pariah, that makes me an undesirable, if you will. And I think that that's not okay. We moved to the neighborhood a year and a half ago from a different location in Jax Beach, and we loved it. However, I didn't know that there was a gate that was gonna be closed most of the time. When we came and looked at the property from our miller, the gate was open. I had no idea. I actually grew up on a street called Lakeside Drive. The street was a street. It had exits at both ends. I had no reason to believe that Lakeside Drive was a road that didn't have an exit point to it. So, I would encourage you all to think about those kinds of things. The other piece is, people have said, "Oh, gosh, a minute or two really doesn't get a matter in someone's life." You've heard physicians speak. I'm also a registered nurse, and I can tell you for sure that one minute, or ninety seconds, or two minutes can change someone's life forever. My husband has cancer, and if something happens and he needs to get to the hospital, and he calls nine-one-one, which is what we would do, what if the gate is closed? And what if the nine-one-one guy has no idea what the code is to get the gate open, or has to come and have fire colors to break open the gate? Minutes and seconds are ticking by, and that's actually not okay in any way that you look at it. I know someone else just said, "Gee, there have been no nine-one-one calls or no emergencies in the past four years." I will just leave you with the fact that it only takes one, it only takes the loss of one life, or the detriment of an entire family, to have everything you talk about being fine and it's no problem and all of that completely fall apart. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. William Randolph. William, if you can forward give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Hello. My name is William Randolph, and I live at eighteen thirty-five Nightfall Drive in Neptune Beach, Florida. I'm here tonight to talk about the gate on Lakeside Drive. On November ninth, two thousand and sixteen, On November 9th, 2016, I was standing in my front yard with my wife, and we both watched our children ride their bicycles on the quiet street. My son was five at the time, and my daughter was seven. After a few minutes, my son told us he was tired and wanted to go inside. He rode his craning wheel of equipment BMX into our driveway and got off his bike because his sister pulled him next to him. A few seconds later, I heard the sound of a vehicle moving quickly on the road. I could tell by the noise that it was going much faster than it should've been. I looked down the street and was appalled when an older Honda through my teenager blew past my house going at least 60 miles an hour. The car had a rope holding the trunk closed, and it almost crashed into the trees at the end of the street when it hit the dirt road. I did what any off-duty police officer would do when observing a vehicle driving four times opposed to speed limit on a residential street. I jumped in my unmarked Capella. I figured if I could catch the offender, I would give him a very stern talking to and write him a citation. Unfortunately, by the time I pulled on the Lakeside Drive, he'd already escaped. He drove so fast through my neighborhood and through the gate that I was unable to locate him. I returned to my house and was complaining to my wife when a Neptune Beach police cruiser pulled up. I flagged down the officer to vent my frustration, only to learn that the Honda driver was fleeing from a felony battery that occurred on Forest Avenue. The suspect had gotten into a road rage incident with a motorist on a scooter at the corner of King Road and Forest Avenue. The teenage suspect spit on and then beat his older victim so badly that he suffered and broke him a limb. This criminal, this fleeing felon, knew that he had cut through the gate at the end of Lakeside Drive to escape. He didn't flee down Forest, he didn't drive down Kings or Atlantic, he cut through Lakeside Drive towards Beach Boulevard to run from the police, he knew with a rap. Two weeks later, I was outside my house when the same Honda drove by. The same person appeared to be driving, and he was again speeding, though not nearly as fast as the original incident. I made my way around the corner to the back gate, which was closed because it was a Saturday. This is a direct quote from Neptune Beach Police report. Detective Randolph stated the vehicle was again driving at high rate of speed and got to the gate, where he appeared to be disappointed that it was closed. I walked up to the car, which was stopped beside the gate. I told the driver, who was looking at his phone, to consider an alternate route, that the gate was closed on the weekends. I made sure to get a good look at the suspect and memorize the tag number. This information was passed along to Neptune Beach Police Department, who used it to obtain a felony arrest warrant for the suspect. This criminal didn't live in the beach. His house was off of Kern and Boulevard, yet he knew he could cut through. I guess this story sums up the gate situation pretty well. A felon was able to use the gate to cut through to conveniently escape from the police, yet he was caught because his avenue of escape was closed. A lot of folks have talked about, "What if?" What if that felon had run over one of my children? What if he had gone over ten seconds earlier?
Thank you, Mr. Randolph.
Do the work, then. Close the gate.
Thank you, sir. Pete Craig Williams. Mr. Williams, if you'd give us your name and number, you'd have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Pete Craig Williams, 45 Oakwood Road, Jacksonville Beach. Thank you for letting me have an opportunity to speak to you. First, I want to address a possible misconception about the location of the property line between Neptune Beach and Jacksonville Beach. I'm speaking to the people behind me mainly, because I'm sure you know. The maps and other electronic devices indicate that the boundary between Neptune and Jacksonville Beach is down the center line of Seagate Avenue. After consultation with the streets, our street superintendent was confirmed that the boundary line is along the concrete power poles on the south side of Seagate Avenue. The entire width of Seagate Avenue, from the apartments east of Seagate, uh, to, on the east, to, uh, to the intercoastal west, intercoastal waterway on the west, belongs to Neptune Beach. Obviously, it's Neptune Beach's responsibility to maintain the road within a right-of-way. Broken Bridge, as is known, and people referenced it earlier, if that went through, that would be another exit. But it's a responsibility of Neptune Beach, as it is part of Seagate Avenue. And Seagate Avenue was named by Neptune Beach. In fact, if you go east of Pennon Road, it's, I think it's 20 Avenue North, on some of the maps, which is a Jacksonville Beach name. Another concern is Kings Ro, Kings Road. In 1984, I served on the Planning Advisory Board at Neptune Beach, which was called Planning Advisory Board at that time. At that time, I recall Kings Road and Forest Boulevard being designated as a major thoroughfare, and as a right-of-way that would accommodate that type of road. As a major road, it meant that any road that intersected it was required to be a certain width, which Seagate Avenue was not. With all the comments for and against the closing of the gate, it doesn't appear that the road classificate, not, another sub-subject, we're changing subjects now, road classification, which hasn't been brought up that I know of. All the comments for the closing of the gate, doesn't appear that road classifications and road construction had been brought up. Again, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm sure you're aware of Jacksonville Beach's classifications for road, roads which will dictate right-of-way widths, pavement widths, and pavement thicknesses in order to handle the daily traffic on our roads. Communities might classify the roads as either local, collector, or arterial. By leaving the gate open, you would be taking the cul-de-sac, a local road, along with the adjoining roads, and changing their old classification to a different one. It's very likely that the existing roads do not meet the required design requirements for this change.
Mr. Williams, need to wrap up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. That was a quick wrap-up. Thank you very much. Nicole Weaver. Nicole, if you'll come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes,
Hi, good evening. My name's Nicole Weaver at 2000 Kings Road. I wrote a couple notes here. So I just want to mention that previously, before the 1979 documents that Ms. Siders provided, she referenced there was multiple ways in and out of our neighborhood, and those no longer exist. So we're forced to rely on the Kings Road Bridge or the Lakeside Drive as an exit. Again, when we bought our home three years ago, the gate was open. There was never any discussion from our realtor that the gate would potentially close. Previous documents reference council meetings such as this, where it seems as though we're only listening, I say we, our council is only listening to what the residents have to say on the Lakeside Drive side. The previous, uh, one of our previous neighbors in red over here mentioned, "It takes two minutes." I don't know what way of speed they're going, and that's absolutely uncertain. Also, we're capable of dialing 911, we know what the rules are. The note, or comment, that there have been zero 911 calls is absolutely absurd and false. There has been a fire on our side of the gate, there has been a tree that has fallen off the bridge, uh, there has clearly been a baby birthed on the side of the road, and some, maybe not all of these scenarios, 911 has been called. But it's easy to make those statements when you are the key holder on the other side of the gate, key holder. One thing that I can thank our council for is, I like to reference, I think of the analogy from the movie 300, and you've united our community in green over here. We are very, I've met neighbors that I didn't know existed, I now know them by name and recognize them on the street, because I feel like we're gonna be at the Battle of Thermopylae at some point, and the unitism is on our side. So you've definitely united us and our small community in green. We have made attempts to come to an agreement with our neighbors in red. This falls on deaf ears, over and over. So we've invited them to our side of the gate and into our homes to come to an alternative agreement, and that hasn't been able to be worked out. So here we are, coming to our Jacksonville Beach City Council to look for alternative solutions. We've offered up mob access just for residents only, not guests, just residents. We've offered up speed bumps to lower the rate of speed. None of us are out to hurt any of our neighbors, or our neighbors' childrens, or pets, or any of the above, but give us an alternative solution. The extreme would be, let us be Neptune Beach residents. We pay thousands of dollars in taxes, add to our neighbors in red, not to downplay them.
Somebody need to wrap up, please.
Understood. So just give us an alternative solution, or let us just be Neptune Beach and give them tax dollars to them.
Thank you, ma'am. Mary Frosio. Mary, if you'd come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes,
Mary Frosio, 1839 Nightfall Drive. Let me start by saying, "It's beginning to look a lot like Christmas." Just had to say that. Okay, to lighten things up. Everybody has before them, I think, by now, if you'll pass those maps around real quick and I'll be like, can you pause Charlie just one second? Thank you.
Okay. I'll shoot you. Gonna give you 2:30, okay?
Yes, sir. What you have before you is a colored map identifying the homes who signed a petition to close the gate, and those who have signed to open the gate. In red are those households that want the gate closed, and these represent residents who would be affected by traffic, noise, pollution, and safety if the gate were open. Whereas the homes in blue represent those who signed the petition to open the gate and who would be unaffected by traffic, noise, pollution, and safety. Why, you ask? Because ironically, they are tucked away and nestled back in their quiet, safe cul-de-sac. The source of this information came from the petitions that were emailed to the city by Ty, providing the handwritten signatures. The orange line on the map represents the two most direct paths to exit the neighborhood to get to Pennon Road if the gate was open. As you can see, this is not just a Lakeside Drive issue. This affects, this directly affects streets like Oakwood, Tallwood, Arden, Pinewood, and 12th Avenue. As such, we have focused our efforts on this path. So in summary, we have 146 homes in red who want the gate closed compared to 27 homes in blue who want the gate to be open.
194.
The, the, the residents in red outnumber those in blue by five times. And I will say that if we can render two of the blues to red after we have some chance to actually talk to them. Second point I want to make is, we have a total of 361 signatures on our petition, which, of which 92 are online petitions. Right, so we have our handwritten signatures, and we have our online petition. We have gone to the arduous task of verifying our online signatures. After this exercise, our original number of 124 online signatures got slashed to 92, or a reduction of 25 percent. I would ask you to be suspect of unverified online signatures. As you know, these online signatures can be anomalous, they can be fake email addresses, and they don't require a city address, state, or country to be input. Therefore, you have no idea how legitimate they are.
Need to wrap it up.
Yeah, I'm got it, thanks. Please note, we did not include Neptune Beach residents on this map. We have a map for MB residents, for the MB Council, should the need arise. We are appealing to you, because you own the land and you make the decision, and you own the gate. Thanks so much, Mayor. Bye.
Thank you, ma'am. Bill Sissel. Bill, if you'd come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes,
That's an extra service, that's. Thank you. My name's Bill Sissel, I live at 1924 Seagate Avenue, Neptune Beach. And honestly, I don't really have a dog in this fight. It just sort of, the thoughts I kinda had, without really any emotion, originally was the fact that it didn't seem like there was a cul-de-sac, and that Mr. Tenny sold a bill of goods, and that people bought, well, it wasn't really a cul-de-sac. This cul-de-sac sort of had a house at the end, so I don't really understand why the city didn't give him a property at the end of the street to build a house, so there would be a cul-de-sac. So that really confused me. And the city gives property, like, they've given to people in the past. I worry about the first responder stuff, because I think it's a liability to the city of Jacksonville Beach, if there was ever, for any reason, a lawsuit brought by any attorney, for whatever reason, which they've come up with a lot of times, and that would be a liability for all the citizens of the great city of Jacksonville Beach. So worry about that. But other than that, I'm enjoying this evening, and I wish everybody was here for a Christmas party in Seattle. Maybe, maybe they should go to Neptune Beach, because they could use the money. Other than that, everybody have a happy holiday.
Thank you, sir. Tim Kazmer, Mayor's Act. I'm sorry, Tim.
That's all right. It's, uh, Tim Kazmer's Act, I live at 2768 Lois Lane in Jacksonville Beach. I'm a resident of Lane Beach, Neptune Beach also, we live at the beach. And, uh, and I bet if we all got together and took a picture, we were like a point center. And got red, and we got the leaves, right? So we're not so far apart, we're all neighbors. I, you know, can sympathize with people that live on a busy street, I can sympathize with people that live back at the end of the neighborhood. I live back at the end of the neighborhood. Being a Jacksonville's resident, I have enjoyed Jacksonville Beach and their streets. One thing I don't like about Neptune Beach is when you're on the streets, about everything, between every stop sign, there's one of these. You guys don't do that. I love their streets. Why wouldn't I want to drive the streets? I would like not to drive in Neptune Beach and go over their speed bumps. When I pull my trailer, I have to stop at every speed bump, because the jack on the trailer, if you don't, is gonna get an extra bounce. It rips it off. If you don't believe me, just look at all the speed bumps, they're all tore up. I don't know why they put speed bumps, they should just put stop signs in between stop signs. Every driveway should have a stop sign. And then everybody would be happy. Now, as far as the whole green houses and, and blue houses, well, that's just fake news, because people that are doing the polls, they have a dog in the fight, so you can't even listen to any of that. Along with what one of the guys said, "If that road, if it would've been a cul-de-sac or a court, it would be called Lakeside Court. They call it Lakeside Drive." All the other courts in that neighborhood, cul-de-sacs, they actually have a court at the end. So it was never really intended to be designated, I believe, as a dead-end street. It appeared that way. We've got a few more of these. I can get at, because I'm driving through Neptune Beach, we all have driven that, you know. And not without the police cars, how, how slow they gotta hit. Do they hit them at 50 mile an hour, 20 mile an hour? Fire trucks, we have to come to a complete stop or a rolling stop before we hit those. All that adds time, mostly adds aggravation. You know, it's gonna be a good neighborhood, either way. I'm gonna enjoy it, either way. And my wife said it a lot better than I did, I will admit, because she's just smarter than I am. But she did marry me. So anyway, take into consideration, and if you need to table this thing for a while, table it for a while. It's gonna be a while before that gets completed, anyway.
Appreciate it. Ryan and I apologize in advance, is it Sidus?
Siders, that's my own fault, I should've wrote better.
Okay. And, uh, which, you're, which city are you from? Jax Beach or Neptune?
Jax Beach. So you, if you can just take one and pass it down, I equipped them in order. If we're just waiting for everybody to get it.
You better.
I know it's getting late. I fully intend to use all of them.
Unless you want me to start the clock, just hang on.
I was just gonna riff a few jokes out. I was gonna say, y'all could order pizzas, it's past dinner time for a little while. How many want you?
Two. Just one, one more. Just one more.
While it's being passed, you can go ahead and start the clock. I've got a few comments to make. First off, I recognize you guys have a tough job with this. I know it's Christmas time, but I can promise you, our colors are not representative of the holiday season right now. You've kind of pitted against one another. I appreciate your comments, and maybe that you recognize that. And my question would have been, as leaders, how could we have not have foreseen this? How could we have not have workshopped this? How could you have not given us the homework to go back as residents and figure out to compromise ourselves? I and I started this as a petition because we didn't know what else to do. Then it's quickly made its way here. That first meeting, I wish you would have gave us the homework of, hey, we take your concern seriously. Why don't y'all as a group and as a residency, between all of you guys, take it home and figure this out? We weren't given that... We weren't given that charge, and I wish we would have been. If we can go through the docs quickly, we already covered number one. The second one I want to talk about is that everybody's real worried about passing through in a cut through. You can see the red line is Pennman to Florida. The blue line is the back way, what people would consider a cut through. There's ways to debunk that and not putting it... Put up signs that say, "No through traffic." Don't put it on ways. We can manage for that. We can enforce that. And I can promise you, between speed bumps and otherwise, and lithe a stop sign, nobody would use that. So I don't think that really holds a lot of water. The second couple pieces, the second page here, we have some concerns about... This is a letter from 1994. We have some concerns about a single access Kings Road Bridge. If the Kings Road Bridge was damaged or cut off by storm ties, emergency vehicles may not be able to enter the neighborhood. A second was an email to Ms. Frosia where the city says the city's position from 2015 was that the current operation meets our expectations. You guys know that the gate was then open at that time from 8 till 3:30, and that has since been changed. There was no documentation at all to support that this was going to permanently close. None of our residents knew that. How we were able to find that, I have no idea. The final one I'd like to address is the last one. That looks like a letter to, I'm assuming, Dave Pallavina, and I can't... From Bob Marsden. If this goes back to those promises that we were... That they were promised, this looks like it was done on a Farnet. We can certainly do that better. A couple of final thoughts, as I know this is going away. I find it incredibly frustrating that I heard the words earlier that, let's put this issue to bed. The expediency that this has been dealt with is incredibly frustrating, I would say, to at least the Greenside. I wish y'all would slow down. We've got a long time before that gate closes. My ask to you guys would be, let's workshop this. Let us all take this home, table the vote tonight so we can discuss as a group before you guys do that. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And Don Wiggins. Don, if you can come forward and give us your name and address. You have three minutes, sir.
Mr. Williams, Don Wiggins. I live at 1839 Fall Drive in Neptune Beach. And if you're going on Lakeside from Jacks Beach to Neptune Beach, take a left on Seagate and go down Tenth Road to get across the bridge. My house is the other way. Take a right, go on North Road. I live directly across the street from Detective Randolph, who just told you about the incident he saw with the person coming down our street at 60 miles an hour or so. That was... That's about my house as well because I live across the street. I am here to support closing the gate, and I find myself arguing against my own self-interest to some extent because it's much more convenient for me to go Lakeside to get to Pennman, to get to Beach. I work out at Bailey's Gym every morning I go. And also, my office is on Beach Boulevard. So at least four times a day, I go through that gate. It's much more convenient for me. However, I can't support what this would do to the neighborhood on the other side. You saw the graphs. Those graphs are legitimate. Every house was polled five times a minute. Everybody on Arden Way wants it closed. Everybody on Lakeside wants it closed. And I would strongly support and ask you to support closing the gate.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Ruth Forrest. Ruth, if you give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, ma'am.
Ruth Forrest, 2729 Lewis Lane, Jacks Beach. Working on this issue over a long period of time that I have, it came to me that we're all the McCoys and the Hatfields, and there's all this tension going on. And also, it occurred to me that there've been more than three or four times when there were other egresses that could have been made more permanent coming into the neighborhood. I've lived there since 02, and I've seen two areas that could have been made permanent egresses where there were no houses, and the opportunity was there and it did not happen. The reason we're at each other right now, as you say, Mr. Mayor, is because we've been put in this position by some really bad management of City Hall over a long period of time. I think we need a traffic flow study. I think somebody needs to look at the whole area and say, wait a minute. What should happen here? Should something be one-way? Maybe there's someplace else where we could do something through our own domain. There's nothing special about Lakeside Drive and that silly gate, and that is a dumb way to turn. And that's right. Seagate is not a strong road, and Neptune Beach doesn't have any money. But we're focused on this one explosive point because that's where we've gotten through dead reckoning, and that's because of bad management right out of here. We're not traffic planners. We pay our taxes so you guys will do this stuff. We would like to see this whole thing relooked at all over again, and let's start from square one and see what needs to happen to everybody's benefit from a traffic analysis study. And that's really the only thing that I have a problem with is right now, it's easier for us to fight because we're like dogs. Like it's been said, we're like dogs going at each other. I don't have anything against these people. I have a problem with the situation. And I think that's what we all have. So I would invite you to take that into advisement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. That completes the speaker cards unless anybody got lost. Anybody get lost? Okay. And at that point, at this point, I'll open the Florida Council. Okay, we have Mr. Vogel saying.
I make a motion to table this for reasons discussed at the workshop.
Second. Okay, we got a motion. Second on the floor, a discussion from the council. Ms. Golden.
Mr. Vogel saying you are wanting to table it because of the LSV issue. Can you clarify?
Yes, ma'am.
So, as I mentioned in the briefing, my understanding was that those are two different issues, that the gate closure is one thing and the LSV access is another thing. So I'm not sure that tabling it is going to address... I mean, that it's necessary since they're two separate issues.
Do you have a response, Mr. Vogel?
Just my response would be, it's kind of like putting a Band-Aid over a series of wounds rather than wrapping it all up. I think that's not legitimate closure in my mind to vote, to just pass this and say, okay, we'll get to it later. I don't like that approach. I think not voting today keeps the pressure on us to bring this back up and give it full consideration for all options and full closure. And just in my experience, in the seven years we've been up here, I think that pressure to get it resolved is a good thing. So that's why I support tabling it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Nichols?
You also want to have the opportunity to look at the cost to improve that intersection, if there was even the possibility of leaving it open. Because right now, I don't think it meets the safety requirements necessary and that the road may not have been built to the proper amount of asphalt and base necessary to restrain traffic on it. I think there's some other things that I personally want to look at when analyzing the whole situation. But I'd also like our city council, I mean, our city attorney to be able to review the low-speed vehicle options and, as we talked about in the council briefing earlier.
Okay, anyone else? Ms. Hoffman?
Well, as I said in the briefing, my vote on this isn't necessarily tied to the low-speed vehicle access issue. So, and I don't think that that's the main issue that everyone's been gathered here for. So if we are going to pursue something like that, I do support continuing to look at it. I think we can do that at a later time with input from the citizens that are affected.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Ms. Golden?
I would just echo what Ms. Hoffman said. I do believe that we could move forward with the discussion and the resolution about the situation with the gate and address the low-speed vehicles as we have more information.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Dumas?
Thank you. One point, water. I don't think anything was seconded.
Yes, it was.
It was. Are you seconding? Okay. All right, so that one's good. Then the other piece is, I agree with Ms. Hoffman. I'm like, what? Ms. Hoffman and Ms. Golden, that this does not need to be tied to whether there will be a low-speed vehicle access point. I like that we... That you were able to kind of make light of the situation at times, even though it's a serious situation and you realize that it's gripping the community heart. There are issues here, and I can see possibly doing something further along down the road if the right house... If the property goes up for sale, that the city would be able to obtain and create a new road going through. So there are things that we could possibly do in the future, but all of those aren't separate from keeping the gate closed or open. I would not support tabling it at this time. I'm pretty sure that we will be very... We'd use our due diligence to check on that low-speed vehicle issue.
Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, I mean, I think somebody mentioned about the legacy and that the fact that this seems to come up and has been coming up for years, and really, we have inherited something that wasn't really our own making. I personally do care about people that live in our city. You know, people are saying that we don't really, you know, we haven't given it much thought. I know we've been talking about it on offense since 2015, and previous councils have also talked about it. It is a bit of an axor of a gate in the middle of the community. It creates division just by the assassins. I did say it was ridiculous, and I stand by that. I don't like gates or walls down there. But it's there, and it's something that we have to deal with. And, you know, there's been things bandied about, like, you know, a follow-up system. And one thing that I would like to say for the record is not... Yeah, we're... But this situation, we have to make a choice, but we're not choosing... We're not choosing one resident over another. I know people don't feel that way, but it is a difficult decision, and somebody is going to be upset here. But it's not my intention to upset people. And, you know, if there were other options that maybe some people have alluded to, but there's nothing really jumps out at me as like a... Another amicable solution, other than open or closed. You know, we're talking here not really about what the impact will be to the residents from the north side of the gate. I don't think that the people on the south side of the gate would mind those residents coming through, or what they see as their streets. I think what we're talking about is the overall impact of traffic from people outside of the area. And for that reason, I can't side with the people on the south side of the gate. I wouldn't want to see an increase in traffic. But I also see the side from the people on the north side of the gate, that it's their community issue, but they're actually those, you know, those streets. So how do we... How do we manage the residents only? You can't really enforce that. You can't really, you know, assess that people just in this community use these streets. You know, you have Amazon, pizza deliveries, all different auto-taxed vehicles coming in. And, you know, I think in the short term, it would be good to give us some closure as a... I'm not saying that to flip, only as a closure gate. But, you know, we need to... We need to open a new chapter in this, as well, and see if there are alternatives. I would be happy tailing it, but I also, if we're going to go that route, I'm happy going on it tonight. But I would like to see that if there are alternatives that do come up that are good for either side or both sides, you know, I would... I don't want to not discuss this again. If we do get a better option, I think we should. So it's not... We're not amending this tonight, one way or another. So, you know, if it doesn't go the way you want it to go, you know, don't give up hope. And by all means, like, don't hate your neighbors for it. If you want, hate me. That's what we're getting paid for. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Quick revision, Mr. Nichols?
I just... I think we should table it. I mean, I just don't see the need to have to expedite this decision because I think it might hold up us looking at other options and stuff because we do have a lot of going on with the city. And I think that it'll, like Councilman Vogel's said, that we would... It would allow us to get back to it quicker. And I think that the people on the north side of the gate, I mean, you know, that the community DOT and the funding sources, I mean, we've replaced a bridge, probably a $500,000 bridge, to ensure your safety. And I think that you were... The bridge before was in horrible condition. And I mean, I think the community and the city staff and Department of Transportation is really taking your safety into consideration. So I don't want you to think we don't care about you.
Here we got a motion on the floor and a second to table. May I have a question? You have a remote call, please.
Casper Douatt?
No.
Casper Goldley?
No.
Casper Hoffman?
No.
Casper Nichols?
Yes.
Casper Vogel saying?
Yes.
Casper Doherty?
Yes.
Merrill Latham?
No.
Okay, so we're back to the original item on the agenda, which is a resolution to secure the gate. And the understanding is that we're going to be looking at options to provide emergency access to first responders. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
That's correct.
And so, any other discussion? Ms. Hoffman?
Just wanted to say, the person who mentioned our responsibility, it's in the city of Jacksonville Beach's responsibility on this. I do agree, this has been a very difficult issue for a very long time, and it has been kind of kicked down the road a little bit. So I am glad that we are handling it at this point. The unfortunate thing, and Merrill Latham mentioned it earlier in the meeting, was we sign up for this. We're used to citizens coming in and being angry with us. It's very difficult, though. I don't... I can't speak for all of us, but for myself, to see our residents arguing with each other and to see this kind of literal divide in the council chamber. So hopefully, however this comes out, we can get together and move on past it. I do want to say, this was the first time I've heard the idea of this portion of Jacksonville Beach becoming Neptune Beach. So that's a creative option. I did want to say, though, that if you call emergency services and you're Neptune Beach, the same station is going to be sending the emergency support, whether you're part of Neptune Beach or Jacksonville Beach.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Vogel saying?
The only thing that I want to address is, this, since it does seem like this resolution's going to pass, it isn't just to look into a gate. It's to actually place, on page three, the public purpose. It says, "To place an electronically controlled gate on the city's parcel that will remain permanently closed, with the exception that it may be open for emergency and public service purposes when the Kings Road Bridge is closed to traffic and during certain emergency events." So I mean, that's my main concern, as addressed. I think even if it's 50 seconds, a minute, seconds do matter in emergencies, and whether that's our police department, which with Jacksonville Beach would be servicing, whether that's them getting there faster in a certain situation. I want... And having multiple access points, that is important to me. So I'm still going to vote no because I think it should be tabled, but even if this does pass, I do think the public safety matter is covered based on that language that we have in the public purpose, and I just want to address that for the audience.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Nichols?
I'm a civil engineer, and I try to make my decisions based off the most amount of information that we could possibly... That I could analyze. And, you know, I think tabling it would give us the opportunity. We probably still have at least six months before emergency.
That's already been voted down, sir.
Excuse me?
That's already been voted down, so... That's already been voted down, so.
I understand that.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is that, you know, I would, I would like more information. That's why I'm going to vote no on this, not that, you know, I'm going to agree any way.
Okay. Any other comments? Madam, a roll call, please.
Casper Goldie? Yes. Casper Hoffman? Yes. Casper Nichols?
No.
Casper Vogelsang?
No.
Casper Doherty?
No.
Casper Duhaut? Yes. Mary Latham?
Yes.
And this concludes tonight agenda. I hope, and you take the words of the group up here. We want one's best for everybody, and hope this can work out.